Begin with, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. McCucci?
Mr. McCucci, I'm here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Here.
Mrs. Weave? Mr. De Liberto?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Tonight's meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary, and you can find it on YouTube. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. We have several requests to approach the Board and speak this evening. Due to the amount of speakers that we have, I'm going to limit open comment to five minutes.
Susan Rivera and students?
There you go, big guy. There you go. Speaking in the microphone. This is pretty darn.
Hi, my name is Caleb. A few months ago, I came to a board meeting to tell you how the seven habits helped me me to raise $1,715 for the local home shelter. Today, I'm here to invite you to come see how all Nighting students and staff use seven habits to be great leaders. On May 10th, we will have our Leadership Day. On that day, students will demonstrate how seven habits are used each and every day in our school. I have invitation for each of you. We hope you can make it.
Thank you, well done.
Any questions for Dave?
No, no, does anybody else on the Board have any question? Yeah, could, you want to come up and pass them out to us?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Well done with the public speaking. I need a next speaker.
Angie Lewis?
Hi, my name is Angie Lewis. I'm the president of the Boys Lacrosse Booster Club. And I'm here to speak on behalf of boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls soccer, field hockey, and football as well. And some of the other booster club participants are in the audience, too. I wanted to talk about QMB Field. We all agree the field is a great turf field. We're excited that we now have a second field for games and tournaments and so forth, and varsity games especially. And what's great about it, there's parking close by with the parking lot. Even the street there offers parking. And what we'd like is for it to have equal resources to alumni field. So unfortunately, two portable bathrooms are not enough. So I don't think it's adequate. Sometimes there's 40 to 60 athletes on the field at any, or at the game, I should say, at any given time, plus 50 to 100 spectators. Away teams also, or sometimes on the road by the time they leave their school till the time they get home and trans, you know, transport up to Quaker Town. I think they need proper facilities to use, both boys and girls teams. And I really just think regular functioning bathrooms with running water are a necessity. Along with that, I think a concession stand is also required. Some teams, like the girls soccer team, for example, use this solely as their main fundraising source. So if they don't have a concession stand, they've got to bring tables and be transporting things back and forth constantly. So that would be a great asset. Also, away team players, along with spectators, along with our own parents who come right from work, enjoy being able to buy a snack after they get there. Sometimes they're there till 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night watching an event. So I think it would also benefit the team, obviously, because they're making the profit from whatever they sell. And this is, we all know nowadays that these teams, the teams need to try and make as much money as they can on their own through their fundraising efforts. I think having electric and water available for those concessions is essential as well, along with appliances. Different teams do different levels. Some might just bring soft pretzels and water. Others might want to use the microwave, or use a stove for hot chocolate, or whatever. But I think just trying to make it as equal in resources to the alumni field would really make it a great asset, and make it as functional as it can possibly be. And the only other thing that I'd like to add, which some of us had talked about, is having storage as well, and I think that would be probably part of the same building. Storage potentially for the booster clubs, but also storage for some of the nets and so forth that we now have to rent space for, so they're not out in the elements the entire year. And also possibly making it a multifunctional storage space so that even the trainers could use it, or the referees, like they do at the alumni field. Occasionally, the trainers take athletes into the room to tape them, or ice them, or whatever. So it would be nice to have that as well. I think that's all I have to say. Are there any questions? Dr. Harner? Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Zabo?
Eric Zabo, Milford Township. I'm here representing Quempo and in support with the other athletic booster groups. Just wanted to state how much we would be in favor of, you know, addressing the shortcomings of QMB Field. Not only would real bathrooms help us, you know, we have 100 marching band kids out there for a two or three hour rehearsal, real bathrooms would be nice. Concessions would be great, and obviously, an observation tower so that we can see how the band is forming their drill formations and stuff. I mean, that would be enormously helpful. From the facilities meeting last week, it seemed like the money to do all this has magically shown up, and it won't, you know, cost the community any more than it would have without it. So I would just like to give my support to the project. Any questions? Thanks.
Eric, this goofy idea just popped into my head. Do you ever use drones for the observing?
No.
Okay, I'll just put it out there.
All right, thank you.
It's an interesting idea.
They don't, they don't cost 30 grand.
Stacy Moises?
Hi, my name is Stacy Moises, and I live in Richland Township. I'm a parent of three children, two of which are students in the district. According to a clearance I obtained through the Department of Human Services, I don't have a record that prohibits me from working with children under the law, under the Child Protective Services Law. But I have a criminal record, and according to this district, that should disqualify me from volunteering, because they say that's what parents think should happen. Over the last two and a half years, I've been trying to get a fair policy in place, and was thrilled to hear that aligning it with the employee policy was in the works. At face value, it appeared that the Board discussed the matter, sought feedback from parents, and created a new administrative procedure. The end result, however, was an administrative procedure which pulls language from the PA School Code pertaining to employees, one that's been challenged in court and found to be executed in an unconstitutional manner when prior convictions have no correlation to their current position at school. As a result of those cases, the Department of Education created guidance for administrators, advising them not to strictly follow the School Code Section 111 when they're hiring. Feedback from parents reflect the fact that they were not advised correctly that employees cannot be simply banned because of conviction. I've watched board meetings and attended the most recent policy meeting where I heard more than once, "You can't work at this school, therefore, you shouldn't be able to volunteer." And that premise is just wrong. It's against state law, it's against case law, it's against guidance from the Department of Education on how to use the School Code in hiring. I recently submitted a written request to the district to provide correct information on legal employment practices regarding those with convictions. Every school board director, every parent in a school board committee, every principal, every parent involved in a TPO or PAL, needs to be given correct facts, since it's that analogy that the district keeps making in justifying this new administrative procedure. I don't think any reasonable parent would expect our district's volunteer policy to exclude those with convictions that are allowed by law for employment. I also requested that everyone on the Board and administrative staff have an opportunity to be advised by the solicitor specifically on this legal issue in respect to employment. While it's understandable that not every director would have a legal background, it is critical that anyone voicing opinion or voting on this policy have a clear understanding of facts and what the law is. The Department of Human Services conducts reviews for volunteers in schools, for coaches, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, church groups. If our district used that process, the results would be consistent. They wouldn't be arbitrary, they'd be lawful, and not based on opinion, but based on the Child Protective Services Law, which is what our goal is, to keep our kids safe. Allowing policy to be created based on ignorance and fear is a slippery slope, and it's reckless. If we don't get this policy right, it's our children that lose. And I hope everyone in a position to decide on this matter, when it happens, has all of our best, our children's best interests in mind, including those who've been affected by their caretaker's convictions. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Cara De Liberto?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Cara De Liberto. I live in Milford Township and have two children in our school district, a third grader and eighth grader. I've been PTO president for three years now, and have been a volunteer since my oldest was in kindergarten. I've participated on the District Parent Council, the TV Closing Committee, and most recently, the Parent Safety Council. One of the many recommendations from the Parent Safety Council was to strengthen our policies we had in place already. We want to ensure 100% compliance of these policies and allow this to be the foundation for increasing safety standards within our school district. I never imagined in the same month, the same week, we made our presentation, that we would learn a district parent was requesting the school board review and lessen the volunteer policy. I have no interest in having a lesser standard that allows more convicted felons have greater access to my children. Why would we want our district to follow the DHS recommendations for volunteers? We're not a scouting organization, nor a sports-based organization, nor a church or a youth group. We are a school district. We should expect our standards to be strict for employees and volunteers. Why should a volunteer not be held to the same standard as an employee? Why should a volunteer not expect to be held to the same strict standards? Volunteers share their time and experience for improved student experiences within the school environment. Employees are entrusted to teach and now protect our children. Both are important and valued parts of our district's community. A person convicted of a crime, a felony, made a poor choice. There are punishments and repercussions to making these poor choices. If that means not being allowed to vote, not owning a gun, not being allowed to chaperone a trip, or help man a station at field day, then so be it. There are other opportunities to volunteer and spend time with your children. Not all volunteers are selected to chaperone nor work an event. Our parent-teacher groups are diligent in creating events and opportunities around the school day, so all may participate in some way with their child. If you're not allowed to chaperone or work at an event, you can help decorate a classroom door before or after school, make a craft or a treat for a class party, help with luncheons or activities planned before or after school. There are opportunities for all. Several months ago, our principal approached our PTO Board with a question. Should volunteers be held to the same standard as employees are? Unanimously, we agreed yes. What's good for the employees was good for the volunteers. Within a few days, our PTO had an opportunity to ask our parents attending a PTO meeting, and we asked the same question, and our parents unanimously agreed, if it's good for the employee, it's good for the volunteers. This was a discussion at the middle school level, as well as at the high school level, with the same results. And just last week at our PTO meeting, I again asked if parents felt volunteers should be held to the same strict standards as employees, and again, it was yes. Standards for employees were appropriate for volunteers. The Department of Human Services says its guidelines for volunteers may be followed by all groups, but schools may choose to select stricter standards. The PDE also says districts may enact stricter standards. I am unable to choose what school my child attends, nor the people that surround my child, when I am not able to be with them. I must expect the district is adhering to the strictest policies it can enforce to ensure my children are surrounded by good people. If I sign my children up for activities with organizations that follow DH guidelines, I can choose to remain with my children to protect them, or choose to not sign up with an organization with less stringent standards. But that's a choice I can make. The only discussion we should be having regarding our volunteer policy is how to strengthen it, not weaken it. Even if it means QCSD sets the bar for other school districts to follow, do not weaken or lessen our standards. The parent advocating a review and offering information to support their case is not being entirely truthful in their information presentation. The parent is using examples of cases where employees lost their positions within districts due to policy changes, not volunteers being rejected because of their felony convictions. There were concerns that the district did not speak with parent groups, or if they did, the district and the parent groups were purposely misleading parents with the information they are sharing. I was approached. I spoke to my parents truthfully and non-biased. I continue to speak to my parents that ask me what is happening with the volunteer policy, and I encourage them to do their own research. I implore the Board and the administration to continue to enforce the most stringent policy standards for the volunteers. This is an easy area for student safety, and we need to ensure the safety of all over the hurt feelings of a few. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is this okay? Do you know the difference between the employment law and the Child Protective Services Law? The different standards?
I know that a felony restricts your being around a child.
That's not true. So the point I'm trying to recommend is...
Are you talking about an employee or a volunteer?
Both. So the point I'm making with this is, I think, to say that you, and I think it's, if I was a parent and someone approached me and I didn't have all the information, certainly it would, I would think it made sense, right? You want to hold the same standard, you want to keep kids safe. But I think it's important for people to understand what those differences are. You know, if we're going to talk about enforcing these policies, which, by the way, I just want to mention, that this is not a policy by our school district.
I understand. I was at the meeting, yes, I understand. I was at the policy meeting.
So I just want to clarify that for anyone who may be listening tonight, because if the Board decides, I will certainly support whatever the majority would be in that case. However, anything that's enforced via policy should go to the Board for a vote, and as it stands, our policy reads that we follow Child Protective Services Law. Our administrative regulations, which should implement that policy, states that we follow the School Code. So this is something, as a Board, that, and as an administration as well, you know, as a team, that we have to make sure we're understanding what is, you know, our AR cannot contradict, should not contradict our policy. So while I appreciate your feedback, and thank you so much for sharing with us, what I want to understand is, as it stands today, our policy does not state that we follow the Employment Code, and so we really need to fix that. So I just wanted to offer some clarification.
Well, I will clarify that our parents support strict standards for volunteers. So the district, the council, the Safety Council wants these policies strengthened.
But what is it that...
Go ahead and have the vote, and allow...
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead and have the vote.
No, I agree, 100%.
No, you don't, but thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, we generally don't have dialogue, but... Next speaker.
Joe Santanello?
Good evening, Joe Santanello, Richland Township and Strayer Middle School. I just wanted to report a positive thing, because I just came from Quaker Town High School marching band practice. They are going to be leaving for Orlando, Florida on Monday night, flying down and participating in the Disney Magic Kingdom Parade, nighttime parade, and spending four or five days down in Disney. I will be there with them, and so that's a fun and exciting thing that's happening in the band world. I wanted to speak on behalf of QCEA officers this evening. Over the past couple days, once we saw the Board agenda, several teachers and staff members came to us as officers with some concerns about an agenda item, particularly speaking the requested raise in salary for the Public Relations position. As a Board, or as a group of officers, we discussed it, and we discussed it with staff members, we have some concerns that the amount being requested, I believe it's about $20,000, might better be served in a way that directly benefits students. I know that many Board members have been really active in talking to staff members and support staff members, and I think that when you do that, you probably are getting a pretty consistent message that there are some areas in which we feel, as teachers, as instructional aides, that we really could use of some of money such as that to be used in ways that can directly benefit children. So I'm going to ask the Board to consider that this evening. Our special ed area, our school psychologists, our medical staff that we have, if those things, those areas in which are going to have a direct effect on kids, we think as QCEA, that money might be better spent. If anyone has any questions about that? Absolutely, yeah. I have a really big suitcase, so... Thank you very much. Anything else? I'll have lots of pictures from Disney for everybody. Thanks.
Victoria Gonzalez?
Promise to be brief on my two topics. The first one is regarding volunteerism. The one concern I have as a parent in general, Quempo took it upon themselves last year to set up booths and assist parents in volunteering. We sat there with laptops and said, "Let's do this." I, at that time, approached the HR person here at the District Office, and she walked us through, we got the cheat sheet, she made sure the links were all working, we tested it back and forth, and we had a bunch of volunteers come through because of that. And it was a great resource for parents, that here it was one-stop shopping for those who may not be computer savvy, or just didn't even know how it worked. We were able to sign up a lot of parents in one evening, and made sure, hey, let's get you set up to go get your fingerprinting done, they made appointments. Well, now fingerprinting is gone from this location, so it's no longer a convenience. I'm not sure why it has gone away. I know there's reasons, I don't know what they are. But second, Quempo, we did it last year, and I wish we, I think going forward, like to do it every year, but why is it that the school district doesn't offer that opportunity to sit down with parents and say, not just send them to a website, but have a night, when you do the parent nights, or the parent-teacher nights, have those laptops out, help them sign up and volunteer, we need more volunteers. And I don't think it's because they don't want to volunteer. The parents that I helped that night had said, and I remember one in particular, she said, "My kid is a senior, I wanted to do this for so long, I just didn't know how." And there was the perfect opportunity. So her daughter's senior year, she was volunteering, I saw her a lot, now her daughter has graduated. But I don't want to lose potential parents that could help support our kids and be there and volunteering, especially if they have the credentials and the clearances. We just need to help them. So that's one of the areas I wanted to discuss. Second is, three weeks ago, and I apologize, I'm still very hazy, my daughter and I were in a car accident. We both are post-concussion right now, or she's still in concussion mode. A frustration as a parent, she has been, she was out of school for two and a half weeks, she's a senior, she is now half-day. It was very frustrating to try to help her get back on track when the doctor's saying, "No screen time," he still has not allowed it. And then, to be blunt, the nurse sent her home and said, "Well, we can't put her in a dark environment, go home." So then, three more days she spent at home. I would like the Board to start to look at, as a district, a clear policy and assistance for a child going through concussion. The recovery time, we were told by the doctor, could be anywhere from a week to two years, we don't know. I watch her short-term memory just being affected, I'll be honest, we both have headaches that have not quit, nausea that has not quit, but just the frustration for her, she is a senior, she has eyes listed across the board in completes right now, and she's in panic mode as to whether she's going to be able to graduate. She's got an acceptance for a college that's contingent on her graduating. And right now, I don't even know where to go with it. I mean, not to be funny, but we have a graduation party planned, and I'd like to have that party for her, and I'd like to send her off to college. But we're in a standstill, and we don't have a clear plan in place still. Mr. Gauzer was trying, we did a Google Doc, but not all the teachers are on board. And so right now, here we are, struggling to try to get her to that point to get the schoolwork done. There's no resource, there's no one coming to us saying, "Hey, let's go one-on-one and help you do the work." I've asked for it, and I was told, "We really don't have someone." You have enough kids out right now in concussion from the middle school level and high school. This isn't something that's going to go away. Concussions happen, kids are involved in sports, accidents. If we can look at this option, not just for concussions, but any kid who's out for medical reasons, health reasons, there needs to be some sort of support plan in place for the families. I'd appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Is your concern that she's not going to be able to keep up with the content to pass the exams?
She hasn't been. She has, she has not been on, she hasn't been able to do screen time. We went from Cs to now Fs, and they're now listed as all Is. And with seniors, they have, what, four marking periods? I mean, four weeks left to close out, third term is closed out with incompletes right now, and a lot of work that's piling up, and she's starting to see them now in panic.
Because she can't engage in the work, is what doctors order.
Doctors order, no screen time, he didn't even want her, he asked for the material to be printed. I've got one teacher doing that. So, well, two others, but they don't really have written music, one is drama, one is music. But her other courses, we don't have paper. I have teachers emailing me that, some issues, and we're trying to work through that with Mr. Gauzer. And he's, he's been a good advocate with it, but again, if they don't follow through, we're kind of in a standstill.
Would you hang out there for a moment, Dr. Harner?
Thank you, sir. A couple things, let's start at the upper balcony level, when it comes to policy, the nurses in the school district and the administration are very sensitive to the national awareness, the local awareness on concussions in athletics and from car accidents, concussions. As a parent, I'm also very concerned. My daughter's had a couple playing lacrosse, and I know that it was when she was in high school and in college that she had it, and impacted her academics seriously. With all that extraneous background, we've been working for quite some time on a policy, and that's before Ms. Edwards, that's before the committee this month, the nurses' recommendation for the policy?
Yes, the nurses submitted a draft that will be on the agenda for the policy committee to look at on April 25th.
And so, and I know, I've talked to counselors across the district about it, I've sent out emails when I get things in on concussions, out to, Sylvia, you here?
Yeah.
Okay, to the athletic director, to others, about concussions. So we're very sensitive to that. I know I've talked to counselors when parents email me about their concern. Now, this is the first time I've heard yours. Now, this is the first time I've heard yours, but I know our counselors are doing a great job with that. And I, Doc, you work with the counselors. I've got Janet back here. That's a topic of ours and our concern, so we'll make sure we're doing the right thing, the appropriate thing. And it could take months or years to get over a concussion correctly. So I don't know what the answer is, you know, exactly for the short timeline in your party.
I think that's why she's panicked.
And I can understand that, but we'll do the best we can, and we'll call you tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Someone else wants to speak?
Is there anybody else from the community that would like to address the board? Five minutes or less, please.
I'm Kendra Wanniger. I live in Richland Township. I was not going to speak tonight, but I just, I'm confused, and I just, I'm actually the chair of Trump's, Trump Bowersville TPO, okay? I'm definitely concerned about the safety of my children. I'm concerned about them every day in school. I'm in school a lot. To be honest, and I know, just to be honest, I know Stacy, to be honest, I am just confused. I don't know really what is happening. I think I, what I think that we need is just more information as a TPO members. In October, we had a very brief, general question asked at the TPO meeting about loosening the volunteer policy with not much accompanying information. It was just a question that was asked. We had maybe eight to 10 parents at that meeting. That's about the realm of parents at our meetings. I don't know about the other schools, but I assume that the numbers are similar at the meetings. Before I could really provide my honest opinion on volunteer and safety, I think I want more information regarding the differences on what's allowed for employees and parents. And I think this should be shared with the TPO members, and their discussions when they, and let them have a discussion about that with all of the information when we receive it. My understanding is the policy committee does have information from the TPO parents' feelings on this topic from all the schools. I'm assuming that it came from that night where we were asked that question, where we had about a five-minute conversation about it with eight to 10 parents at the meeting. I don't believe that that, we have 400 kids, over 400 kids in our school, and I don't believe that that probably portrays everybody's feelings, an accurate view of everybody's feelings on the topic, especially if we didn't have all the information. I, and like I said, I'm not choosing sides, I'm not, I didn't make a decision myself. But if we're going to use TPO's concerns as a basis for changing a policy or implementing a policy or whatever that you're doing, I think that we need to make sure that we're addressing the TPO members, which is every member in each of our schools, and they're all members. And I feel that it is important to gain all of their information together. That's all that I have to say. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are moving on. Superintendent's report. Dr. Harner.
Sir, I am proud to say we have a very short report, unless there are questions. Chad, you're up.
I will try and resist the urge. Just, I have an opportunity this evening just to share with you a little bit about an initiative that we have going on in coordination with our local YMCA's. Couple of months ago, we were presented the opportunity to get our second graders some safety around water opportunities at the YMCA. And so I just want to give you a quick update on where we're at with that. So we're currently coordinating with both the Upper Perkyomen YMCA and our local YMCA here in town. Our principals have been provided dates for later in the month of May where their students will be able to go and participate free of charge. There is no cost for the lessons themselves. The YMCA's staff the water. Our teachers are there to support students on the pool decks, but they are not expected to get in the water with the students. The cost, the only cost for us as a district is transportation by bus, which we have currently in our budget, so we're not asking for any additional funds. But the way the lessons work, the students go on back-to-back days, and they spend about an hour in the water, and they do rotations with the people, with the staff at the YMCA. And Joe, if you could turn real quickly. What I just want to highlight here is that they're not swimming lessons. They're really intended to help students to get comfortable if they're around water. And we know how important and critical it is that, you know, if a student is not comfortable in the water and they were to accidentally fall in, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to learn how to float properly. They also get training on, you know, how to properly put on a life vest, so that when they're in situations where they might have that going on, they know exactly what's, what to do next. Joe, next slide, please. And so you can see their objectives. These are, this is a national program, Safety Around Water, that again, several local school districts, Central Bucks and Centennial, both participate in with their second graders, and so this is not a Quaker Town exclusive thing. And then the last piece here, this gives you a sense of what the rotation looks like on those two days, and so you can see how they kind of organize the safety for our second graders. And so my hope is that in a couple of weeks, when we get our students in the water and participating, I can report back to you just a little bit of the success with our students and teachers. So I will open up to any questions.
Not a question, just a comment. I think this is a, I'm assuming you all choose second grade, just because that's probably an age where they're learning, right? This kind of thing? So I actually had a friend of mine who trained babies. It was the most incredible thing, trained babies how to float. And there's so many ways to prevent these type of things. So thank you for allowing this for our students. I think it's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
The last part is a little summary of what happened today at the high school by Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure to spend the good portion of today at the high school, at the job, I mean, at the College and Career Fair, though there were very many more non-traditional opportunities for students there this year. So that's what my, the job was in my head there for a minute. We had over 80 representatives there today, and that has grown from about, I think you said 60, but I think the first year it was closer to 50 or 55, five years ago, when Dr. Harner first arrived, he had tasked our guidance department at the high school, and specifically Eric Gauzert, to start working on putting something like this together for our students. So today, all of our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors had the opportunity to spend some time in our lower gym. It was set up wonderfully, as it always is, with tables and all the representatives there, walk around, speak to the different colleges and universities, trade schools. We had representatives from beauty schools, automotive centers. This year, we also had people from, that were specifically working on how to go through the college admissions process, how to seek financial assistance, and it's really quite enjoyable. I had the opportunity to talk to quite a lot of the individuals there, to hear how they interact with the students. They're very willing to answer any questions. It's not just about like, hey, come to our school. They'll actually tell a student, you know, what are you interested in? And if they don't have that major or it's not something, they don't try to say, well, you should come here anyway. They ask them about fit. They teach them about, you know, are you looking for a smaller school or a larger school? What do you think you might want to do? So that's really encouraging, because I think it's important that if we're going to put our students, you know, in front of these individuals, that they're giving them factual information, and that they're really telling them the truth about what life would be like at their institution. And we're also very fortunate to have a number of representatives from the military there as well, and they are always popular tables, mostly because they give away great free swag. And so the kids love that they have all kinds of neat stuff and cups and lanyards, but also a really great opportunity for some of our students who may have an interest in that but don't really know how to access it, because, you know, of one reason or another, to be able to meet with those individuals, learn a little bit more about what that could do for them. And then I actually saw some connection between some of the colleges who have partnerships and ROTC programs. You know, the ROTC person from the Air Force, for instance, was sending someone over to the Penn State table and talking to them about how they have a partnership there. So I think that's a neat opportunity for our students as well, to be able to offer them. So all around, it was a really great day. Kids were very engaged. They take around a little passport book and get it signed by everyone that they talk to, so that they can try to win a little prize. But really something I think that we should be proud of in the high school, should be proud of in terms of how it's grown and the opportunity for our students. So just wanted to share a little bit about that with you.
A quick question. What grades do you start letting them go and see those types of?
So it's, since it's held at the high school, it starts in ninth grade. And we did, I did, while I was here, though we don't traditionally send seniors to it at this point in the year, there were a group of seniors who had not yet committed or who had decided that they weren't exactly sure what they were going to do, so they had worked with their guidance counselor to be allowed to go down so that they could still have that opportunity, since they were still trying to make up their mind, so.
My last comment on it is that the excitement and the energy in the air today is probably only a shy sock down from what we felt there at graduation last spring, last June, if you remember how the excitement in the auditorium, up there at the PPNL Center about graduation. The students were really energized. So one of the things that I had talked to Eric about today, that our guidance counselors put this on for the last five years, is let's consider allowing and bussing up from Strayer the eighth graders, so they can start to understand the opportunities out there, both career and in college. Colleges are lovely, and I've went around and shook every college, every hand of everyone who was there that had a table and a display, and asked them if it was their first time or their fifth time there. And it was really exciting to see how respectful they were, or complimentary they were of our students. Our students were marvelous in their behavior and going around there, getting a little blue card signed so they could win something, but also asking the good questions. Thank you. And that completes the superintendent's report.
We have Joe's student report tonight. Just kidding.
No kidding.
We have no student report this evening. Standing committee reports. Policy committee report, Ms. Weed. Do you have one?
Well, I don't, because we didn't meet tonight, but I will say, because there were remarks about the volunteer policy that was considered, we did have a special meeting on April 1st, and many people, I see some faces that attended that meeting. I know there's discussion about changing the volunteer policy. I sent an email out today to the policy committee, and after speaking with Attorney Garten, I am personally recommending, as the chair of the committee, that we not change the volunteer policy. I believe it complies with the law. It does. And we just need to match our AR to our policy. I realize that Stacy will not be happy with that decision, but I believe that if you cannot get hired by the school district because you have a felony conviction, you should not be allowed to volunteer either. As I'm an attorney, as some of you may know, I can tell you, I feel very confident, especially after talking to Attorney Garten, there is no due process right for volunteers. Schools are not required to allow you to volunteer. It is completely different than an employment situation. So the case law that was discussed on April 1st at the public policy meeting really does not apply to volunteers, and is the way PA law stands now, and after, you know, Attorney Garten can jump in and either agree or, you know, clarify what I'm saying, but I feel pretty confident that we are totally in compliance, and I am recommending we not change anything in our policy, that we just get the AR to match the policy.
I think you mean, sorry to interrupt, you mean that we need to have our policy match our AR?
Yeah, they need to match, but I do not think we should be changing things for one person because she has a felony conviction.
And one thing, just to clarify with that, so if we, and I agree with you, I think one way or another, it does need to come to the board for a vote. So in that case, it would, I guess, be given to the policy committee for a first reading, right? And then we'd vote on it, or we could maybe even expedite that process?
Attorney Garten, let me ask you how we should proceed.
My recollection is you're going to be discussing it again at your next policy committee meeting, so I would think that a recommendation should come from the policy committee and go through the normal process of how you approve policies or disapprove policies, so I wouldn't deviate from your normal process.
Okay, well, I'd like to take a vote on it on April 25th, because I think this has been talked about enough, more than enough. We've spent a lot of time on this, and we need to vote at the next policy, or at the, we're having a policy committee, and then we're voting next on the 25th.
The ask is, the AR matched the policy, because they are in conflict with each other. The stricter standard is applying the PDE standard. And so when we go to policy, we'll talk about that. We have to adjust it, and then it comes for first read and second read, and then we go from there, right?
Yeah.
That's the normal, okay.
I think actually the policy needs to match the practice.
Yes.
The AR.
Yes.
Right.
And would you agree that the AR currently contradicts the policy?
I would say that the AR is not consistent with the reading of the policy, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I don't know that it's that off.
It's not.
I don't think, I think the AR, I think the one line of the AR applies, the section 111 E and F, but I don't know that that other line references that.
It actually.
The felony.
No. Yeah. Well, we'll clean it up, but the long and short of it is, I personally, and am going to recommend to the committee, that we continue the procedure that's been followed, and we not change it, which means if you have a felony conviction, we're going to follow the law. And if you cannot get hired in this district with a felony conviction, you cannot volunteer.
Is that true, though? I don't know if that's the case, because if you, based on these, and I get it, we're saying we're going to follow PDE, but then we're going to say we're not going to follow it because we don't, you don't have any rights, is what it sounds like, but I can't believe that there are people out there with felony convictions that have nothing to do with student safety, nonviolent crimes, that aren't allowed to be employed within school districts.
Mr. Vice President, if I may, before we get into a discussion here, can we go through the reports and move any discussion to the new business section of the meeting, so we can get through this?
No, I think we can wrap this up now, but thank you. Jeff?
School code language applies to employees. The references there do not specifically apply to volunteers. As Attorney Weed, as they say in Allentown, stated.
We do say attorney, yeah.
It's unique to that area.
It is, it is, it is.
She said, volunteers are treated differently than prospective employees, because volunteers don't have, quotes, "property rights" in being a volunteer. A volunteer is purely a discretionary option that's provided by the school district. There's case law in Pennsylvania that says you can't have a blanket restriction on employment. Doesn't go so far as to say on volunteers. So when it comes to employment, the district has to review the nature of the job, the conviction, and make a judgment based on a review of that, as to whether someone's eligible to be employed. That standard has not been extended to volunteers. So what happened here is that the AR specifically calls out that if you're in that list of violations in the school code, you're precluded from volunteering, although the policy is not that clear. So that's kind of the end of this, and needs to get sorted out once and for all, so the policy is consistent with the practice.
So I just want, to your point, you mentioned, and this is where I think there's confusion. We're saying, if you can't work here, you can't volunteer. But it sounds like she, like a person with a conviction may be able to work here. So I think we, I'm just going to recommend that we say, these are the standards that we want to follow, rather than saying, if you can't work here, then you can't volunteer, because I don't know that that's true. You agree?
Current practice is for volunteers, that if you fall within a enumerated list of violations or offenses in the school code, you can't volunteer. Doesn't mean you can't come to Halloween parties and things like that, but you can't be chaperoning and things like that. There was, there's a case decided by the Commonwealth Court and said that that blanket restriction, as relates to employees, needs to be declared unconstitutional, only to the extent it requires districts to do an evaluation. If you evaluate and say no, you're fine. you're fine. Just can't be a blanket restriction. But volunteers don't have the same rights as prospective employees.
So that's, and a critical point I think people need to understand, especially parents, is that there is, I think, you know, as a parent, we're always trying to be cautious and that makes sense, you know, these are children. However, the case that if you can't work here, you can't volunteer is not true because, and that's what I want to make clear.
That's not.
No, it may or may not be true.
I think that the right term, you may not be able to work here and you shouldn't be able to volunteer, I think is what the approach is.
Right. And Caitlin, you need to, or Ms. Mitchell, you need to also.
You can call me Caitlin.
Yeah, I know. We're friends. But you need to also understand that that was case law. So the district, the way the law is written, they have absolutely every right, as Ms. Edwards had said, to say, someone with a felony, like this individual has, no, we're not going to hire you. Full stop. End of story. And then that person sues. The ACLU comes in or they sue. That is the situation. You have even less due process rights as a volunteer.
No, and I, and I agree with everything you're saying. I do. But I just want to be careful that we say, this is the criteria we're going to use, not if you can't work here, you can't volunteer. And also, we need to tighten up on having the board be involved in these discussions from the beginning. Because as it stands, frankly, the ARs are being used in place of policy. ARs are supposed to be used to implement policy. They, the Child Protective Services Law and the PA State Code are not the same. So we just, we really need to get in front of this and tighten it up, as you guys said. So.
And before I move on to the next subject, I do want to point out to you, Attorney Weed, this is not for one parent. It's for all parents because it is not specifically because of one parent we're having this conversation.
Right.
Many parents could be in this circumstance.
Oh, I agree, but one parent has raised it continually.
Well, the way you, your tone was as such, that we would be making a special exception of some kind, and I'm just addressing that.
Well, I am recommending we not make exceptions for people convicted of felonies. I just, I think that's the right approach.
Also, just one last thing, we can move on because I think I'm next on the report here. But.
Coming out of your five minutes.
Okay. All right. So not all felonies are banned under either. So there is a certain amount of time that, for certain nonviolent crimes under this PA State Code, you have to, it's 10 years from the date, the end of your sentence. So again, there's no, there's no blanket ban in some cases. And so I just want to make sure that that's also clarified.
I think you got to clarify the other point, though. And I think we're not comparing apples and oranges. I think we're trying to apply, we're trying to take logic and apply logic. And sometimes it's difficult. But you can absolutely vet potential employees a lot different than you can vet potential volunteers. Correct?
By law.
I mean, you can. And so the vetting process of our volunteers is essentially if you have or pass these background checks. Is that correct?
Um.
There's no interview? There's no application?
It's just a background check. That's correct.
It's simply a background check, which, which is completely different than sitting down and having a conversation and an interview, that you can vet a potential employee. And so I think that if you're, if you're going to apply the logic that you could work here based on certain criteria met, those logic can't be applied to the volunteer policy because it doesn't, it doesn't happen. The vetting process doesn't happen at any level, regardless of whether you have a conviction or not. And so, so you're simply stating that because you've either A, passed this background check, yes or no, you can, you can do whatever with the kids. And I think that that's really the critical difference here, is the, is the way that you can vet potential adults that are going to be around kids that either have convictions or don't have convictions. And so I think it's imperative that we state as strict standards when we have less control. If we had more control over it, then you may be able to make a very good argument for applying the same logic, such as we're accepting someone with a felony at seven years or eight years after they've proven. And, and I'm okay with that, but you don't have that. And we don't do it today.
I hear what you're saying.
And so I worry that anytime you open up, again, Pandora's box.
Yep.
As minor as these cases are, it's hard to get it shut.
So just.
So we just have to be sure that if we're going to, if we wanted to implement something like that, you would have to have an absolute vetting process that gives the community the confidence that we are doing the right thing.
So, and I didn't mention this in the last policy committee meeting, I probably should have. So those of you that don't know, I used to be a membership director with the Girl Scouts. So I actually managed managers who managed volunteers. So you want to know how many escalations that I would receive on a daily basis about volunteers who were cleared, by the way, who had incidents? I joked and I shared with someone before, a funny story. We had an eight, nine-year-old girl dance. They hired a DJ. He was cleared. He thought it would be funny around Halloween to put on a clown mask and a fake chainsaw and run around and scare the crap out of all these girls. You know, I got phone calls about that. This true story. Why in the heck would the Girl Scouts allow someone to be? So obviously, there are going to be risks regardless if someone has, to your point, Keith, you don't know, you don't, we don't do these interviews and so we don't always know. And I understand the concerns, I do. We just have to make sure everything we're doing has to do with student safety and not marginalization of someone based on a past mistake that has nothing to do with student safety at the center. And I think having that criteria that everyone's comfortable with, like I said, I will support whatever the majority decides.
Yeah. And I'm just saying that you need, you need a way that you can confirm with parents, because again, I agree that, that I have a choice to make if I, if I want to let my kid in any club or, you know, any sport. But living in the community, I have a choice of the public school I can choose.
But do you think parents scrutinize other volunteer organizations? Or do you think most parents know the differences between them?
Well, again, I think, to your point earlier, I think there's a lot of ignorance on it. Myself, I mean, until I started reading up on it, I mean, I can say that I wasn't well-read. But I, I know that if I was, if my kid was at the, you know, midget football fields and I was worried about the coach, that I could sit there. I can watch the entire time. He's never by themselves. I never have to let him be by themselves with that particular person. Vice versa, in the school, I may not even be chosen as a volunteer. So I won't even be there. The teacher may not even be there. So I'm leaving it in the hands of somebody else who simply has a background check. It's a little scary.
Well, so.
So, and you're right, because you don't know the people who haven't been caught yet.
Well, and we're doing a better job than most school districts. Most school districts allow for parents to sign an FBI waiver if they've lived in the district, or excuse me, in Pennsylvania for 10 years. And I like that we're stricter in that way because you wouldn't know otherwise if they committed a crime outside of Pennsylvania. But that being said, like within the Girl Scouts, we would have overnight visits where, you know, under the standard, you know, this parent we're referring to would be able to do an overnight visit with parent, with, with children. And every other volunteer organization has these rules in place.
But the parent.
For a reason.
But the parent has a choice, right? And I know parents, the kids participate in these things and, and don't allow their kid out of sight.
And, and, you know, I get it.
Whether it's Boy Scouts, whether it's Girl Scouts.
Totally get it.
Whether it's cheerleading, I mean, and they have that right. At the school, you don't, I mean, they're working, right? So they're entrusting us to make that decision for them.
So I would just encourage all the board members to, and maybe I'll see if I can find some documentation, just to truly understand the differences in these two criteria. Because under Child Protective Services Law, no, no violent crimes, sexual crimes, any crime having to do with the child, abuse, none of those are allowed at all anyway. So, but I think we've hashed it out. So anybody?
Yeah, we'll conclude the rest at the policy committee meeting. We're going to move on.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thanks for your patience, everyone, while we talk through that.
Moving on to the facilities committee meeting, Ms. Mitchell.
It's me. Okay. So in our last facilities meeting, we discussed, well, actually, I got lost. Remember that? Oh, wait, you weren't there. Sorry. I was, I got lost talking to, to Rob over here on the phone. And I was a little bit late, but I was on the phone for this first part. But if I miss anything, please feel free to share. So really excited that we are going to be able to implement the summer projects list on our capital projects, a list of capital projects, as you all probably know. But if you don't, the district started to set aside a million dollars every single year. And I'm really happy to announce that we're able to get to all of the very, we actually have a plan within our facilities first time ever, that we evaluated all of the things that needed to be fixed within our facilities and we rated them based on priority of what was going to be a risk of, you know, student safety essentially. And we, we started working on those first. So the summer projects list, I will read those quickly. We're going to do a fence replacement at Strayer Middle School, sports shed fabrication at the high school in Strayer, ticket booth remodel for the high school alumni field, Trump Bowersville shed roof replacement, carpet replacement of the office and hall areas. We're going to paint Towicke and Valley certain rooms and offices. Obviously, we're relocating those students from NIDIC for the year while that, that facility is renovated. We're relocating contents of NIDIC Elementary to Towicke and Valley. Actually, I got an email from Mr. Godshock in that regard today that explained that. So we're already in the process of doing so. Expanding, I'm not going to say this right, agronomic program, capital projects as listed below. We also closed on the settlement for Milford Middle School in Towicke and Valley. And that occurred yesterday, correct? Yep. Everything went pretty easy. No bumps in the road. Okay. And that's going to be.
I had to do a wire transfer because Zach didn't want to carry a check. He's going to come out of the proceeds.
Oh, a $2 million check. That was.
The money he paid the district by wire transfer.
You mean it wasn't made out to Zach? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
I say that I blame you. I don't know that I've ever had to hold that amount of money.
It's a $2 million check. You think they're just going to give it to somebody with a fake ID? Like, hi, I'm Quakertown School District, you know? Like, what are you worried about?
I would just be nervous to hold it even, I think. Right? You know?
Oh, I've handled checks larger than that in settlements. Yeah.
Well, I know.
And you got 33%, didn't you?
No, no. I'm a defense attorney. I don't get percentages, just hourly rates.
So the, the savings for, for Milford, not demolishing Milford Middle School, we actually had in the budget a $580,000 set aside for demolishing that in the event that we would have to do so. And since we don't have to do that, that money is coming back into our budget. And we're going to talk a little bit more about some of the items that we potentially will spend that money, just based on the board's conversation tonight. There is a property that is for sale, 15 South 8th Street, and that's next to the Alumni Field. The market value for that is $242,000. It's a property that, of course, we are somewhat, at least interested initially in that property due to the location of where it is. And we could potentially use that as a storage area. And it's not a property that is going to come so easily to us in the future. So that's just something that is, right now, we're taking a look at. And the administration will provide us more information later. It could possibly use as offices also for athletics, facilities, or special education. An update on the batting cages. The district has completed all the preparation for the spring sports season, which is now underway. With limited storage, batting cages could not be ordered. All prep work was completed. The batting cages have been ordered and the site work has begun. And Rob said that they will be installed by the district maintenance staff, which apparently can do it all. Kudos to you guys. You guys do everything. There are proposals for the rear sports complex, the Q and B field, as you, as some parents mentioned earlier. There is a proposal that you all are going to see that includes bathrooms, concession stands, potentially a storage area. And the discussion has two different proposals. One of them is for $558,000 and the other one is for $454,000. And the higher estimate includes a maintenance storage building. So there's, should be information in your board docs that shows you some of the planning for that. Several booster club members said the bathrooms that are needed are to replace two porta-potties now on site. Obviously, you have over 100 people there. That can become quite chaotic. So we'll be discussing that tonight. On May 6th, the board will be awarding bids for the NIDIC project and the listed capital projects for the sixth grade center gym roof, facilities roof, Richland Controls Alumni Visitor Bleacher, sixth street sidewalk and curb replacement, and the sixth grade center radon system. There is also the first round of invitation to bid for Milford Middle School and Towicke and Valley. The district has completed round one of the cleanup of unwanted, obsolete, or non-functioning materials. So we're trying to find a way to repurpose these materials, if at all possible. If we cannot reallocate those, we find, try to find ways for others who could possibly use that. And if we, if all else fails, we recycle or dispose of that, that material. Round two items for sale will go out this week. Round two will consist of various surplus items from the sixth grade center, the high school and the Alumni Field, including tractor, leaf machine, brush hog, snow plow. Borough of Quakertown, we discussed a billing inquiry, and I think this is quite fascinating. While reviewing the facility and maintenance budget, we discovered there was a significant shortfall year-to-date on the main electric account. Confirming this finding, the district initially reached out to the borough to find out what was going on. And we found out that we had all this extra money and the borough was not billing us for this. And it was some kind of a glitch with the borough's third-party billing company. And so they have not been able, well, unable to, excuse me, determine the root cause. The borough was able to reconfirm that the mailing information was accurate. And due to the non-receives of the invoices, the borough agreed to remove all late fees because obviously, I never thought we'd ever have a problem with trying to pay someone money, right? That seems silly to me. And finally, a company, Echo Trall, is, and that's on the agenda tonight, is to furnish and install all environmental control, energy management, and/or building automation in Richland Elementary School. And just to give you a little bit of context there, in Richland, we would have certain classrooms that were freezing cold, certain classrooms that were really warm. And sometimes the system would just go haywire. And it's, it's a big risk, kind of fingers crossed that we're not going to have that problem. Before we replace the system, that is on the agenda tonight. Does anyone have anything else to add that I didn't cover? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Are we going to discuss the concession stand now or later on?
It's on the, it's on there for a vote and, or at least a discussion. I'm trying to.
Let's talk, I know we had that whole policy thing.
We can. I don't mind.
I don't know what it is. I just, all right, keep going.
All right. Cool. I'm good with that. Education curriculum meeting, Mr. Anderson.
Chad Evans did a wonderful job for my education report, so I don't really have anything else.
Very efficient. Thank you. QCEA Foundation, Mr. Jackson.
The Ed Foundation met this past Wednesday, just yesterday morning. One of the things we've been doing is fundraising a lot, trying to, we've been hitting up our vendors for additional funds. The interesting, interesting thing is, I've been talking to the teachers who are here in the room. I always say, we've got $500 mini-grants we're desperate to give out. Last board member, board meeting, when I was talking about the Ed Foundation, I also mentioned that the Ed Foundation in the past has given away $10,000 to the district to make a big splash in some manner. However, we haven't done that in some time. So the result is, we've got quite a lot of money in our funds and frankly, we're sick of it because nobody wants to take our money.
Can you build a concession stand, sir?
Well, here's.
We need one.
Here's the thing. We're getting so tired that we've decided to try and give it up.
Mr. Zabel.
I guess this is, well, I know, but. Well, I know, but I mean, the Ed Foundation is not just going to buy somebody a nice truck or something like that. So, but I'm asking the, I'm asking the administration and the teachers, the principals to try and find the best way to spend $25,000. And the Ed Foundation is guaranteed to provide $25,000 during calendar year 2019, 2020 to somebody. And going forward for the next, for every school year thereafter, $15,000. So I'm asking the administration, I'm asking the teachers, I'm asking the building principals, $25,000. Please tell us how we can help you spend that money.
That's very impressive. Thank you to all of you for all your folks-
Tell your friends. A lot of money.
Wow, my brain's already going. I can't concentrate on the agenda.
Can I just back up a little bit?
Maybe.
I saw the, I guess I was sort of half joking about the drone, but that observation tower's like 50 grand.
I thought it was 35.
I mean, so that's a lot of drones. I mean, you could have like VR goggles. You could have like freaking cool tech with drones up there getting a 3D perspective way better than a stationary concrete embedded stand. Like, wow. Like, seriously, you should really consider that because how much money, 50 grand for something that's so you can stand 27 feet up in the air and watch bands, which is really cool. It's also called like a stadium. But I admit, 50,000 is pretty cheap, but drones are even cheaper. Yeah. Does anyone do that? Like, because you could really get all kinds of perspectives on who's out of place, who's really, you know, tracking it.
What happens when the drone fails?
You could even do AI. You could probably get the AI going and figure out the pacing and who's off step.
Put a point order. This is not the superintendent's report.
Anyway.
I won't hold it against you.
Okay, I'll go back.
Did we just underestimate that price?
Is it, what's the price on, what's it going to be later on in the, yeah, it's coming in the agenda?
Okay.
All right, president's report. I have none. Stephen's not here, so unless there's anything you believe I should, no.
Okay.
We are now going to accept a public comment for anybody who wants to speak on the fiscal consent agenda. And no comment. Moving on, voting to discuss the fiscal consent agenda. Motion to approve. There's nothing on it.
Oh, thank you. All right, moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. Motion to approve
the agenda as presented. Approval of the Microsoft enrollment for education solutions. Approval of the rental contract agreement with the customer-
Costumer.
Costumer. No wonder I couldn't read it. Of the senior high school play, Fiddler on the Roof. And then we'll vote. Any conversation or voting on the agenda for approval for conversation?
I will, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Open for discussion. Anybody have anything to say?
Is there a price on the costumer agreement?
What are we approving?
I'm not sure. It comes over from the high school. They do it every year. Comes out of the high school's activities fund, so it's probably a couple thousand dollars.
Like, I was going to say, it's usually like an 800 to a thousand.
Well, it'll come out of the high school's budget. They budget for it every year and we approve it every year because it's a contract for their play. And Mr. Lekner sends it over.
And we have to approve of these type of contracts by law, right?
Is that one of the things that's changing coming up? Like, we talked about certain things we-
No, the change was the student activities funds. This is just, yeah, part of the high school's activity funds. I know, confusing, but it's a little different.
You're not going to write a rather large number in there after we approve it, right?
But it's in their budget and, oh, we have to approve it because we're going to write the check, basically. Thank you, sir. All right, all in favor of the fiscal consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Moving on to the public comment for the facilities consent agenda. Any public comment on the facilities consent agenda?
Oh, we have one.
Oh, yes, sir.
Name and township of residence, please, sir.
Hi, Scott Hendricks, Milford Township. And been the custodian at Richland Elementary for 18 years. I just want to thank you for fixing the heating system. It's only been a pain for the last 10 years since they redid it. So, and I'm sure Rob will be appreciative of that too, because he gets usually probably a phone call or an email every day or every other day from me. So, thank you.
I thought you would be excited about this one.
Anyone else? No? All right. Fiscal consent agenda, the approval of the contract with-
Echo Trall, I think.
What did I say? Fiscal? No. Facilities consent, I got glare, everybody. I'm so sorry. Facilities consent agenda approval contract with Echo Trall. All in favor, say aye.
Nope, so moved.
There's no motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Conversation on the contract, anyone? All right, voting for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And next, we will have public comment, if any is desired, on the human resources items presented this evening. Would anybody like the microphone? All right. Motion to approve the human resources consent agenda for discussion as presented. We're going to discuss administrative staff, supervisory and tech staff, professional staff, unit pay and support staff. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So I had reached out to the administration specifically surrounding the human resource consent agenda and specifically my concerns with regards to a long-term strategy for our operating costs with regards to staffing the district. And so, you know, I was informed that there were certain positions that are on here that we need to get out so that we can capture the candidate now. Is that correct? As opposed to wait?
Yes, so two of the positions are the TOCs converting to administrative positions. So if you were to approve those two tonight, we have to hire their contractual replacements, which are both in special education, which I'm not sure if you're aware right now, but it's very difficult to fill special education teaching positions. So doing this now allows us to bring back the teaching candidates to you relatively quickly.
So I, I'm concerned because we're going to be seeing these things. We don't have the full budget figured out yet that I know of. I haven't seen it come before us yet. And so my question to the district administration was, what's the total ask for the year going to be in operating expenses specific to-
New positions?
New positions. And I was informed that it was somewhere around $900,000 at the end of the day. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's lower than that now, but it's in the $800.
All right. So I'll take you back to how I think I got on this board was, they were faced with a fiscal challenge at the time. The board and the cell was to reduce operating expenses. And we had discussion on operating capital expenses and everybody was in uproar. But the deal was, we needed a million dollars out of the operating budget. And that was the best thing to do was to close the schools at that time. And here we are, two years later, at the end of this year, this budget year, we'll be asked for a total just south of a million dollars in new positions. And so I think we need to be mindful of every one of these approvals that are going through. I don't know that, are all these necessary? I haven't, I mean, I've, you know, we read an email that said that special education are going to, the costs are going to increase secondary to mandates that are coming out that we're going to have to answer to. But I would propose to the administration, and I would look for my colleagues on the board to support, you know, some type of business plan surrounding the spend. And why are we, why are we spending, why are we hiring these positions? Are they necessary? And, you know, is it something we need to do? Is this a burning platform issue today? Because here's the deal, there's going to be a board that's going to be faced with the challenges of closing a gap in a year or two or three. And so the more we're mindful now, I think it's an easier discussion in the future. And so I'm open for dialogue, but I think we need to, we need to do a better job of looking at that. That was my first point. So my second point is, under the supervisory tech staff, I did also have concern with the increase and salary adjustment for the communication specialists. While I recognize that there's not a lot of folks out there like Gary and he does a wonderful job for us, this is a 40% pay increase. And I don't know about anybody in this room, but I haven't gotten a 40% pay increase in a long time.
Ever. Maybe over 25 years.
So I think we need to be conscientious about-
That's, if I could, that, you could also just say you probably never took a job at maybe a 40% reduced salary for a few, you know, like, you can tell the story two different ways. And I don't know what the prevailing wage is for that kind of a position, but it's a little harsh to say it's a-
It is a 40%, though, right?
Yeah, but what if it was because he was below-
Shaking your head, no?
What is it?
Probably 24%.
But at any rate, you know, it could be partly because of, you know, he came in at a very low, low salary. So I'm just saying it's, we should look at it at face value. We shouldn't taint the discussion.
When you put these kind of things in, you know, before the board, I don't know that there's justification for it. I haven't heard. And again, you know, when we talk about the small spends over time they add up, and that's, I think we just need to be very mindful that there are things that are going to be pressing coming up, such as we have a contract negotiation when, next year, and those kind of activities.
Yeah, we got healthcare, all kinds of pressures. It's not going away. I agree.
Right. So I'm just saying that I think we need to do a better job of oversight and whether or not we need to approve these things. And, you know, are they, do we have to do it today? Is it something we could postpone until tomorrow or not? And again, as governors, a governance board, I can't answer that question. But I think we can ask the administration before we just rubber stamp a lot of these.
I think one of the things that'd be helpful for me, I know we kind of talked about it in different meetings, but really the long-term vision that the administration has for the district itself. I know we talked about how teachers can be added back in because of classroom size being declined. But I think that vision can go out longer than just the current month that we're in or fiscal year that we're in. So if you have a five-year plan, I think that'd be a great thing to help us kind of, you know, chart our course and understand what direction the district's going to wind up going in. If it's adding back teachers in and here's the why behind it, that'd be fantastic. Or just understanding how the shrinking population of students impacts everything else. I think that would be really helpful for me.
I agree, because I can't quite tell every time we vote on this, what does the big picture look like for us? So, for instance, I think it's interesting that Keith pointed out the big number for the positions that we're adding. And what would be helpful for me and make me feel more comfortable in voting on this would be to understand, you know, this is how many teachers support, yada, 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 that we have. And then this is our projection or this is what our recommendation would be for that. And some type of commentary, justification, what have you. And I also want to echo somewhat what Keith said as far as, you know, Gary's position. It's nothing to do necessarily with his talent. I think the hard thing for probably a lot of the staff members in the organization, for instance, you know, some support staff who are part-time and we, excuse me, we're not allowing, we're not allowing, but we're not making them full-time. Or they get a very small raise. Or teachers that have not been replaced. Due to financial reasons, it's a hard pill for them to swallow to have a 31% increase. So what does everybody else?
Well, I would add too, I think it's helpful to know what prevailing wages are for these positions. I, you know, poor Gary, who I really do like, I'm picking on, but I just looked up the borough, the labor statistics for positions for his equivalent at colleges at, you know, and it's $12,000 less than what is being proposed by the administration. So I think those are important things to look at.
The one question I would ask of Zach is whether or not the new, to Mr. McCucci's first point, $900,000 is the number you threw out with certain-
That's what they gave. So I, you know, as I was reading through this a couple of days ago, I had emailed the administration saying I will be asking questions about, you know, regarding this. And so my thought was that, and I know we've been adding, and there was an email that came out regarding, you know, our special education costs and the increase that we're going to be seeing and certain things. And so, you know, my vision was almost like to have in front of us a one-page business argument for whatever. Look, are we going to increase, you know, for special ed? My example would be, you know, a small paragraph that would outline, you know, changes in state regulations that we have to meet, you know, unfunded mandates and blah, blah, blah. This is the cost. This is how we plan to do it. And this is going to be the cost over one, two, three, four, or five years. Gives you a five-year plan. You look at it, you have a clear understanding of why we approve these positions today for the five-year plan. This is going to be the cost of the district, it's going to be cost of the operations, blah, blah, blah. The same thing could apply for the concession stand. The concession stand's going to be $400,000 or whatever that cost is. Here's how we're going to, we're going to fund it today. Here's how we're going to make the money up potentially in the long run. So you have something to go back on. The nice part to the board and the administration is, once you look at that and once that's approved, then it goes, it's part of the minutes, the documents, and you can reference that. And a clear example on the opposite side is what the administration did. You know, everybody in our community was in an uproar, and myself included to some extent, with the dance studio. But what a one-page outline of what the business plan and the business strategy behind there would have muted my argument and would mute the arguments going forward that we continue to hear on occasion, which is, the strategy was cost, you know, outlay reduction by bringing those folks back. It probably paid for itself in five years. If you could show that to the public with a one-page document to us as the board, you can reference it, then it's an easy discussion to have. But I feel like we're blindsided with this. And quite honestly, I don't even know, like, you're trying to, you know, trying to look and this is replacing this one and this. And I don't have any good feeling about it. Not to say it's not necessary. I'm not saying it's inappropriate. I'm just saying we got to be, we have to be more mindful of how we, how we approach this. So that was my log.
So, again, the number, you offered up a number of $900,000.
The administration did. I just-
Okay, right. And that's what, I'm just, the number was $1,900,000 that you heard.
That they told me.
Correct. Okay, so Zach, that $900,000, we've been through budgetary season since January. We saw in the finance committee, like last month, we saw the latest projections in the budget. The $900,000 spoken of, is that, was that included in that budgetary presentation or is this new money, new cost?
Yeah, so January 24th was the first preliminary budget presentation and all these positions were in that presentation and it does list the need for them. So for example, the TOCs were in there. For teaching positions, we have in the budget, the special education teacher at the academy due to, and it lists the reason, expanding number of students over there, board certified behavior analyst, student needs, elementary special education teacher due to the caseloads increasing. So that is all in the preliminary budget presentation.
The reason I ask, the reason I ask is simply because there's two sides to the coin that Mr. McCucci has thrown out there. One is, it'd be nice if we had some sense of your master plan over an extended period of time because, so that we could see it. But at the same time, I want to make clear to the board members that they had a master plan. They just, we just didn't know what it was. Because when I just asked them, if the $900,000 was incorporated into the budget or not, they said yes. And they listed out a list of positions they had crafted this budget around. And these- of positions they had crafted this budget around, and these positions were part of that plan. We just didn't know it. So, to your point...
But it was brief, but it was briefed to the entire board in January, so...
Correct, and this comes back, but this comes back to Mr. McCucci's other point. We get a lot of information, and rightly or wrongly, a lot of it goes in one ear and out the other. And that's not a good excuse, but it's a fact. If we could have something to put in front of us, is what you're asking for, then we would see, because again, to Zach's own statement, every one of these positions was in the budget that we knew of back in January, and he's simply presenting them here at this time and saying, this is what we're going to do. So, it's not $900,000 of new money. It's $900,000 that we planned for all along, it's just now that it's coming...
The budget, it's new spend now. If you didn't spend it, you would have this money left in the budget, correct?
Yeah, so if you didn't approve all the positions that were in the budget presentation, then obviously the expenditures in the preliminary budget would have been less.
Correct.
But he was planning for it.
But to my point is, that may, that very well, that may be the case, and I don't, I'm not disagreeing, and I'm not, I'm not saying they're not doing their, I'm not arguing that no one's doing their job. What I'm saying that we got to be conscientious, because I think, I think the reason, I mean, the reason we ended up having to close a couple of schools was to reduce operating costs. And so, if we're a little over on change today, the question is, do you have to burn a hole in your pocket to spend it? Is it the right spend? Are we spending in the right areas? You know, could these be better used than teachers? I have no idea.
Right, but again, to...
My point is that I just wanted everybody to know that by the end of this school year, we will have spent 900 additional thousands of dollars.
Correct, but at the same time, again, it's been in the administration's plan for some time, and Dr. Harner correctly iterated just a moment ago, the board, it was presented to this board back in January.
I think, if I could summarize a little bit, they're all good points, and I think it just, the administration lives and breathes this, knows it inside and out, doesn't need to be reminded, right? You have the vision planted in the distance. I can speak for myself, not the rest of the board, but certainly context is often lost just because I don't remember what we, you know, I tend to see things, nod my head, they look right, they sound right, yes. I might not remember that that's associated with these two bullets three months or four months later.
Back to it.
Yeah, I think, so as part of it is just marketing. To what your point is, Keith, is a lot of times it might seem that we do these capricious decisions, but actually there's a lot of logic behind many of them, and if only we had a marketing sheet or a fact sheet or something like that. You're right, it's that the context is lost when they're extracted and put into a very perfunctory situation like this. And I think it would be helpful if you just reminded us, this is what we talked about in January, this is what these two are for, here was the purpose. And even back then, if we didn't recognize that we should discuss the purpose back then and you want to discuss it now, at least we, at least we have some context to discuss and not just bullet items.
If I may, sir?
Thank you.
If, just to remind you, just two weeks ago, an executive session, these positions were asking for your approval tonight, nobody had a non-concurrence, just saying. So, that, so those, you weren't there, sir?
For the record, I wasn't there.
Yeah, you weren't there.
There.
And then, then I, because of your email that you sent, which was great, it was my bad, I didn't brief you on what the topics were, but anyway, that, so we're bringing it forward because there was no non-concurrence, not a single one, at last meeting. And if there's work that now, after two weeks of thinking through it or just seeing it tonight, then we'll do more work. But please understand, there's an opportunity cost that we have here. Special education positions are invaluable positions. Finding a, just a regular, someone who is a special education teacher is tough. We have in the past had to do emergency search because we couldn't find them. Most districts don't, can't find them, because we're Quakertown, we do a pretty good job of recruiting in teachers even without the search to do special education jobs. So, what we're asking for, for your vision, now I understand you have concerns or ideas about communications, but it's all within the context of having, foreshadowing where we're going to be, and I thought we had done that okay last week or last board meeting.
So, I do want to mention, and I think this would be super helpful, so right now I am revisiting the presentation that was given on the preliminary budget. I'm not actually looking at the voting meeting, I'm actually looking at the finance committee meeting, so I don't know that this level of detail for the preliminary budget was in the actual voting meeting, so perhaps not everyone was able to see that. But there is a very lengthy presentation on all of the varying positions and staffing. And what I would just recommend, just to keep us reminded that this conversation did have, or maybe for those that weren't able to, for whatever reason, have visibility to the document, is to link this particular document in the board docs to support that there was this conversation, or at least this was initiated back in January, just to help everybody out.
I understand, fully understand, and we'll get it right on that.
And just so I can add that new positions that do appear to be included in that number, additional teachings, special education teacher at the academy, board certified behavior analyst, student needs, elementary special education teacher, that's to deal with caseloads, high caseloads, senior high school health NPE teacher, there's a new health course, Strayer Middle School Mandarin teacher, program growth, instructional aid positions, there's some special education aid positions for the academy, Strayer, POF, two instructional special education aides, it says to be determined, emergent student needs. Then, there's going to be two less TOSSa positions because those are going to be moved to administrative conversions, one for special education for, one special education TOSSa to special education supervisor, one convert, converted from the academy TOSSa to the assistant principal of the academy. We're adding a tech associate, and I think I covered them all.
What is the number, what is the number of administrative positions over the...
And you can look in that document also, and what's very great, and I think very beneficial, is it lists in the last five years. Now, it doesn't show us a forward thinking, which is what I think, what we're trying to achieve by what you mentioned, but it does show a breakdown of administrators, aides, food service, and so on, from 2014 to 2000, and this next budget, to give you an idea. So, I think linking to that, where we could revisit this ahead of time, would just be helpful for everyone.
I think you're probably right.
Zach, I noticed that we have some retirements. So, these positions that we're going to be bringing on total in about just under $900,000, that includes any replacement positions for these three retirements that we're going to have? There's not going to be an additional three hires on top of that, plus any other more retirements that we may get over the next few months?
Any retirements, if we're going to replace them one to one, we don't put them in a presentation because it's not new to the budget, we actually capture the reduction in the budget. So, when we present in two weeks from now the proposed final budget, those retirements will be captured, you'll actually see the salaries drop a little bit from the last time we presented the budget update. Does that...
Yeah, that answers my question. But for example, we need three new math teachers at the high school, three new English teachers at the high school.
And so, it's going to get added to the budget again, right?
Well, no, so budgeted FTEs, these are proposed FTEs.
Correct.
And there's clearly difference. Once it's a budgeted FTE, it's just reoccurring operating costs.
Yes, sir. So, you're going to rehire those three positions?
Absolutely.
In addition to all the administration positions just under $900,000?
Right. So, that's what I'm saying, these, the proposals, increasing the budgeted number of FTEs district-wide, to the tune of 900, 800, somewhere between 800 and 900,000 dollars. And I'm okay, I'm okay with it. I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying, guys, we have to understand that. And, you know, there were certain people on the board here that were challenged to reduce a million dollars in operating costs just two years ago, and so, you know, we're approaching that. I get that they're doing their job wrong, I agree. I just want to be...
Four and a half million, just saying.
What's that?
I think it's more like 4.7 that we're trying to...
Well, the TV closure was the million dollars, that's the one I remember, because that's where my kid, well, both my kids went to Milford and TV, so...
Where did the salary for the communication specialist get recommended from to come to the board?
Where'd it come from?
Who put it in front of us here for a vote?
It came from administration superintendent, sir.
Okay.
The, also, for clarity, since we're on the budget and we're on FTEs and all that, one of the things, as we're down 117 students right this month compared to the same month last year, and we've talked about our declining enrollment, we've, I want to make sure you remember as we get into two weeks from now, when we have the retirement discussion, all that, even though we're having declining enrollment at the elementary level, we'll have the, the lowest, lower class sizes begin at fourth grade, when they become fifth graders, we'll need less teachers, but we're in the budget, we're making sure that we keep those three positions in the budget. So, as we have a declining enrollment, that's a discussion we've had many times, that we're going to, we're trying to keep our end strength the same, but we need over here in special ed and some program like Mandarin, to keeping that in the middle school, we need to do that.
Pop quiz, decreasing enrollment. What has been the last three years, our enrollment into charter schools from our school, the totals?
When you were working on that today, I think.
I was working on the dollar. We have about 150 cyber and...
We were about 160-some. So, when we get some back, and I just signed, and they went out letters today to back out to our cyber community, to our cyber charter community parents to say, hey, come on, we have a program. So, we're actively doing that, and so, as we lose some, we get some back, and Lisa's the point person for working with the family, putting them in our own cyber program, or putting them back into our regular bricks and mortar school.
And so, how many cyber, brick and mortar cyber students, charter students, was it the year before? If we had a decrease last year, how much was it the year before? Best you can.
About 150 at the end.
So, it's about even. I mean, it's, yeah, but we're not talking about going up or down by 100 kids every year? Or 50 even?
The state average for district, I believe, is 7%, and we're at 2%. So, we're doing really well, our quality of our programming, quality of what we, our community and all that, the dollar figure because our budget, since I've been here, the budget, I think my 13, 14 school year was, Zach, about 94 million dollars, and this year it's what?
Yeah, there was two years in a row where it was about maybe half a million dollars apart from each other.
And so, by the growth in our budget, you divide the number of students into that budget, and that's how much money we send off. So, my first year, we're sending off for one charter school, I think we talked about in this last meeting, was about $11,000, 11.5. This year it's 14.5, because of the cost of doing business in our, in our, in all the big cost drivers, which we don't need to get into that, we'll do that next time. But that's, I think our cyber budget right now is 1.92 million, was the last, last count that we had, just for cyber charters.
I want to know if there's any other board support to pull the communication specialist from the vote and have maybe an executive committee conversation on job description, stand, you know, salary, as Ms. Weed pointed out to us earlier, prior to us making a final decision.
Could we table the vote since we, well, actually, I can, I can motion to table?
Right, I'm looking for anybody who wants to do anything.
You can motion to table a component of the consent agenda, yes.
Yeah, that's what I would do, because we are having a meeting in just another, what, two weeks from today?
Yes, ma'am.
Something like that, so it wouldn't be a whole month that we'd have to wait, so I'd motion to table that to get the additional information that Dave referenced.
Is it on the one position or the whole thing?
The communication specialist.
So, we don't have this kind of discussion about, I mean, you know, so would this, I mean, does this go to the executive session? Is that what...
I mean, I feel like it's kind of disrespectful to have this conversation.
When we're talking about one person, one position, yes, it's an executive session discussion. If you're just pulling that one item, if that's what I'm understanding you're saying?
Correct, yes.
And moving, letting us move forward for the recruitment, so we don't, taking advantage of the opportunity right now?
Just that one component, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct.
What component?
Letter B.
Letter B, yes, yes, that is my intention, that is what I suggested.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Garten on the procedure on that.
No, I think that someone can now move to table a portion of the motion made on the consent agenda, so as to table item 15B.
A motion to table item 15B.
You need to vote on that motion to table. We need a second for a motion to table.
All right, all in favor to table the vote?
We got to, we need a second, or else...
No, we don't, he just said we don't need a second.
Oh, we don't, oh.
He made the motion.
Oh, I apologize.
No, you'd have to have the majority to agree with you, and then it could be...
I got you, thank you.
Listen, if you want to do a roll call, fine, you don't need to, but if you think it's going to be different votes, I would do a roll call.
All in favor...
The motion is to table item 15B from the consent agenda.
All in favor to table motion 15B from the consent agenda? Say aye.
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 I would think you should better do a roll call.
You better do a roll call, because not everyone talks.
So, so, just, so we're clear, this is, what we're doing is removing it from this, we'll talk about it in the executive session next week.
Yes, two weeks.
Two weeks. And then it...
Then we vote on it at that meeting. So, we're just, we're just delaying it to discuss it further.
Yeah, I just don't know where we have the dialogue about it, that's the question.
We never did, and that's the point, I think.
It's going to be done in executive session.
I feel bad, I think it was in the executive session two weeks ago, and I wasn't there, so I feel, you know...
I mean, there was dialogue in a sense that there were words, but there wasn't like dialogue, which I'm just asking.
You don't care.
You know, and that was the recommendation, that we have that dialogue prior to voting on it.
Right.
All right, roll call vote.
Okay, so the motion is to table the supervisory tech 15B from the HR consent agenda. Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. De Liberto?
Yes.
It's five to three, five in favor, three against, passes.
So, that component is tabled to a later agenda.
All right, we're going to now vote on the human resources consent agenda as proposed?
Less item B.
Less item 15B. Motion to approve? Or, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously with the exception of 15B, which is tabled. Public comment on the Office of Teaching and Learning items. Actually, is there anything on the agenda?
There's nothing there.
There's nothing on there, okay, we're moving on. Public comment on policies and program items agenda as presented? All right, motion to approve the policy and programs consent agenda as proposed by the board?
Member random of...
Oh, member random of understanding between Headspace and recipient of subscription donations via Headspace Education Initiative. Motion to approve, someone?
So moved.
A second, please.
I second it.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Wait a minute, I didn't say anything.
Silence, as it said.
What the hell? He's like, that was quick.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
We're almost, guys, we are almost, we could almost finish before nine, and that means that Kern's buying everybody a drink.
He said that one time, poor guy.
I hold him to it, he said he would, he said.
Information...
Not everybody, but...
Information items for us to discuss, enrollment report... Enrollment report. All right.
Does anybody want to discuss letter E?
Yeah, that's a good point, because the, these are not up for a vote. Their information.
What, what we're after is if the board, to, to think about giving us the direction to develop this further, if the board is interested in having the concession stand, the band tower, up and running for the fall season, band tower, obviously, Mr. Zabo would tell you that, that has to be early August, if it's going to be done and utilized out there. And then we can tear down the wooden structure in the parking lot. And, and for the, for the rest of the team is middle of August, I believe, when they go into full season. And, and if the board is not interested in doing that, then that, that's fine, but this is why it's up on the agenda, for the timeliness. And so it's no vote to do it, but a direction from the board, that we want you to develop better plans, good plans, and we're, we're serious about it, so we know the, if we're going to move with alacrity or not.
Did facilities make any recommendation on this?
Well, we did make a recommendation that we would really bring it to the board. My, my opinion on it, and I think what we shared in the meeting, was that the funds, the $580,000 that we are not going to use in the budget, was going to be used for this, these projects, so it would not be any new funds. And considering that all of the facilities projects that were rated a top priority have, are being in the plans to, to work, and based on the feedback that we received from the, the parents, that, now granted, I'm a little bit, I'm only a little bit confused about the band tower, which I'm in support of, of that. I thought we budgeted it to be around 35? And it looks to have increased?
Well, I think that's the band tower itself, the, the person you see is the actual, the foundation as well, and the labor to, to install it, so the band tower is around that price.
Where's the current band tower?
There's not one on the field.
Right, oh, is that gone now?
No, it's still there.
That's what I thought. Is that, we want to move it? Is that the?
No, it's like falling apart.
Yeah, ask somebody who gets up there, the condition.
It's like falling apart.
Yeah.
It's in bad shape.
And this tower can also be utilized by other organizations.
No, it's in concrete. Unless the organization comes to it.
This is steel, I believe.
But if, if they're using that field.
Then they use, their coaches can use the, the tower.
As opposed to drones, which could be used by other people.
Drones!
I love that idea.
You have four minutes, sir.
You have four minutes on your drones.
One of the things I want to make sure we do give direction to is, I'm in favor of the larger concession stand that includes a storage area, as well as the band tower, so there is a cost differential, that's part of the facilities committee report that Ms. Weed went through, Ms. Mitch went through. And again, I think it's important to get the storage right away as well, and mostly because we have this money from the budget that wasn't used to demolish Milford, there it is, this is a good use of that fund.
Also, I mean, an item in note that we talked about in the facilities committee is the, the Milford, the, the money budgeted from Milford won't cover everything for what's being proposed for the, for the concession stands.
And it's not free money.
So we were, so we're looking for more detailed information on, you know, where, where are we going, what's the total cost, I think is what we had said, what we talked about today.
It's impossible to have the, the total cost until we give them a direction to go forward on, and that's what they're looking for here.
Understood. But we're just talking about things that were discussed in the facilities committee meeting.
Is there anything like the Nightig project, where it starts out at these numbers, and then ends up at like 1.2, 1.3?
I mean, I'm just surprised at how much it costs to build a bathroom, couple bathrooms, but I know it's needed.
A modular home.
It also will allow us to rent that facility, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
To make.
Well, we're renting it right now, and we're doing really well with it.
I will, I will tell you that I, I do agree, having been a part of the, the rental, that, it, it was, it was cold, the porta potties were, it was, it was a cold day, and so it was.
They filled up?
Yeah, it made for, it made for a little bit of an miserable experience.
We could have heated porta potties.
I, I would like, again, like to see just some numbers about, you know, maybe it would help ease the pain if we knew what our rentals were projected for, maybe like one year, two year, three year, four year, five years.
Like return on investment type of thing?
No, and I think, because I just think it's a good, it's a good bit of information, so the community knows that, look, you're spending this money, but the return is going to be X in five years with the rentals or whatever.
It's honestly hard for me to justify half a million dollars for a building, for a practice field.
It's not a practice field, it's a varsity.
It's not a practice field, it's the alumni.
But again, I want to make sure everybody realizes, we're not, we're not suddenly spending this money. This is the proposal, we're asking them to come back to, to us with a direction. We're, we're telling them to go in this direction, and then come back and, with costs for us. We can change our mind at that time.
No, 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 you're right, you're, you're right, you're right, I just, I, I think, I.
I agree with you, Keith.
We haven't spent the money yet, you're right.
I agree with you that we need a little marketing pitch, right? What's this for, I mean?
Business case, right?
And because we should be looking at all those things.
I think we, we could, could we give the administration the direction to say, yes, come back with numbers, and also additional justification? Would that be fair?
Well, or just, just more knowledge about what, what the rentals are going to collect us.
That's what I mean, like the return on investment.
It's really nice, because it'll help offset some of those costs in a long-term investment. This investment will be here for 30 years, 40 years.
We'll be paying for it for 30 years.
I mean, it's, it's a varsity field, though, and it's pretty typical at other schools to have it.
I think that field is, is used a lot, as the mom of a former athlete, soccer player at that field, and those of you who have children that are athletes, and the band, too. I, I think that we don't necessarily need to look at it as, oh, this is a return on investment, like you do in the private world, this is something that I think our kids need. And if anyone's been in those porta potties, we could use some bathrooms.
Mr. Akmanowicz, to your point, there is no 30-year payment on this one, this is money in the fund balance.
There's, there's no balance here.
Yeah, yeah, but you can take that 500,000 and pay down principal on a loan, and you're not paying interest somewhere else for 30 years.
Correct, we have that, you're right, we have that option. We could spend, we can use the 580,000 to pay down our debts, or we can do this, you're right.
I mean, it is a heavy-use facility.
But having traveled a lot to other schools, they have real toilets, and I think that's.
I won't say you can't sell me, I'm just saying you got to sell me.
You know.
It's out there with like curtains around it.
Yeah.
It, I mean, it's a heavy-use facility, we had, I think, seven or eight different. We're going to reel in specifically E, we've decided that, actually, I want to also address A, B, C, and D real quick, before I forget. The, under information items, the enrollment report, the board briefing booklet is available in board docs. Round one, we had a, the district has completed round one of the cleanup of the unwanted, obsolete, or non-functioning materials, with the sales of Milford Middle School and Toheken Valley upcoming, and the Nightig Elementary School property being transitioned to the Toheken Valley this summer. These locations were the utmost priority. The purpose of the process is to assess the dispose, assess and dispose of the district's surplus materials, whether for internal relocation, reuse, public reuse, recycle, or disposal in accordance with our Board Policy 711, disposal of obsolete outdated district property. In order to offer items to satisfy their needs, and in accordance with our Board Policy 711, disposal of obsolete outdated district property, we offered the items that could be potentially offered to them out of the building, school administration. Quaker Town Elementary requested to have a half moon table and a teacher's desk relocated to their building. The district then decided to solicit bids for the remaining surplus of the classroom furniture. Faith Christian won the bid, and all the items they submitted an offer on, it's about $3,305. There are some other attachments that are available in board docs. And then round two of the surplus auction, there was a tractor, leaf machine, brushhog, and snowplow. Round two items for sale will go out this week. And then we discussed the field house and the updated the building plan. Yeah, I just had two things on. Band tower. Item A, if I could, is that all right? Go ahead, why don't you go ahead? So on the enrollment piece of it, the declining enrollment, is that kind of in line with what our projections were for the year? Is it kind of like within 5 or 10%?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then on the, the bottom, I'm just trying to understand information, it talks about, like, life skills, students, and then when we were looking at the, I think the special ed budget presented a couple weeks ago by Ms. Pallone, that number is like 950? Is that children, students, and this is only showing 150? Like where's the other 800?
Well, they are included in the grade level numbers.
Okay.
So students that are assigned to a program where they are minimally included, are listed at the bottom, because those are, they aren't self-contained programs exactly, but there's a separate teacher that instructs those students for at least a portion of the day. All other special education students are included in regular education classrooms, pretty much all day.
Okay.
And so they're just included with their grade level peers and the grade level numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so these are just specialized programs at the bottom.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was the enrollment report we were discussing. Correct. Did anybody else want to add anything, specifically A? Any other subject on information items somebody wants to discuss?
The band tower? There's some cool things to look at, Mr. Zabo.
He really did find, he really did find something, though, in that line.
You can actually Google drones and marching bands, and, and there's even sign, there's a picture with a, even a, like a cherry, like a, probably a rented, you know, those lifts that you can rent. So anyway, you got, you got a lot in 50, you know, 50 grand that you're going to spend on a fixed, on a fixed system, or maybe something that's kind of cool that other students could play with.
If we're not going to pay for a band tower, but we're going to pay for drones, are we also going to pay to train somebody to use the drones in the proper way?
Kid, me, probably only going to have to pay a kid to learn that. But anyway, just a thought, there's, there's alternatives than doing the same old, that might cost a heck of a lot less than 40,000.
Having watched the marching band in the parking lot, maybe you can explain how the band tower works, and why it's necessary versus a drone.
I mean, although it's neat and humorous, it wouldn't really work, because the staff needs to be able to real-time listen and watch and interact with the students, rather like the taking on and off goggles, and rewinding the tape, and what, like, that's not.
You're instructing, you're saying. And you're instructing them as you're up there, as well.
Yeah, it's a live instruction, based on visual evaluation of what you're seeing. And, and there are, you know, I mean, I've been to many, many world-class marching band activities, like the international drum corps and things, and although they use drones to film it and get a bird's eye view to show on YouTube, nobody's using a drone to replace an instructional view.
Have, have we gotten any other quotes, or just this one?
I'll also add that, that Mr. Parker did provide several different options for the tower, and they, they, we'd be happy with any of them, and.
Is there like a $20,000 option?
I think that we looked at some of those, and they were just not conducive to a safety, a safe environment.
Yeah, one of them was like a scaffolding, and we were concerned, how do you keep kids from climbing it, and it's not as sturdy as this, and, and I think this one, and Rob might be able to correct me, you can actually close it off, so people can lock it up, can't go in there and climb up the top of the tower at night, you know, kids, whatever kids do, so.
But you know what we haven't talked about, is Amazon's got a blimp.
All right, all right, all right.
Actually, they actually deploy these drones.
That, that was fake, man. Just so you know, that was fake, it was April Fool's joke.
It's visionary.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
Those are innovative.
You fill it with hydrogen, too.
Run it out of helium. So we, we, $41,000, really, that was the best one, and it just seems very.
All right, just so, so the administration's clear, the directive is.
That doesn't even include installation?
We want them to move forward with getting some quotes regarding.
That whole list of items.
The list of items? Did you guys pick that up?
I'd say yes. Yes.
So, just to, just to clarify, when you say quotes, we don't have time to bid this out, so we would be using a cooperative bidding service. So it'd be, Rob would just go onto Co-Stars, and that's where these things are from, and we would bring back the Co-Stars contract, Jeff Garten would review it, to make sure, you know.
You'd decide ready procedures.
Yeah, so it's not, we wouldn't actually be going out to bid.
Is there disadvantage of doing it that way?
One of the things that, everything we, we've been doing around, from the dance studio, and there was a business model presentation about that a couple years ago, when we started talking about dance, to, to doing alumni, or the sports complex and the revenues, we have 50, our debt service, Zach, for the field, $3.6 million, right around $100,000, correct?
For the back sports complex?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's around 127, I mean, it goes, it changes throughout the 25 years.
But anyway, we, we're making a Q and B right now, we have a short five-year, three-year contract for $15,000 a year to call a Q and B field, they advertise. We wanted a short contract, they wanted much longer, because we know when we finish it with a concession stand, we'll be able to command a lot, larger number for rental fees and for advertising and all that. We've only had it a year, so we don't have a whole history of renting it, and so it's all going to be supposition and predictions that are.
Which is, which is perfect. You know, it sets a goal, right? So our goal is to collect $50,000 in revenue from renting, I don't know what it would be, but, right, you got a goal, you meet the goal. Just, just show it, just throw some numbers, I mean, I think it just, it helps ease the pain of everybody having these discussions, and prevents guys like me from arguing against it from the other board.
There is four sides to the tower, right?
Yes.
You could cut one.
All right.
And one, one last thing, just to, to Mr. McCucci's point, to help you make sure we don't go too forward, too forward, too fast, without you knowing everything, I want to make sure that when we do send everything out to bid, I don't want to, I don't want you to come back with numbers and quotes, and then tell us we need to decide on this tonight, because the contractor's ready to break down the next day. You know what I'm saying? We, we want to, we want to have the numbers and be able to say, yes, we want to proceed or don't want to proceed, without the impending doom, if we don't do it, we've lost a whole year, or whatever. I don't want to speak for you, but I think.
I agree, I think, I mean, I, you know, this, I, I think, I think the direction is, I'm not even sure what the direction is, but I think what we're asking, I think you guys are asking, would you?
We would bring it back next month, and, and you really would have to vote on it at the end of this month, or else you're going to be doing construction in the middle of, of the sports season.
That's a loss.
So to, to do it, you.
How long is, how long is the construction phase of this?
Do you have any?
I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware, they're going to come with, back to us with numbers. And if we don't like the numbers, and we say no, we've pretty much lost it for the season. Well.
No, no, sir.
No, sir.
We just won't, we'll have construction, as you know, where the, many of you have been back there to sports field, and it's all fenced off, right, where the concession stand is, and it's fenced off where a future tower site would be, to protect that space for future development. So there's been a lot of foreshadowing of this and completing the project. So whenever you give us the go, then, if it's two weeks from now, then we have the end of July, if it's in May or June, we know it's the middle of October.
of July, if it's in May or June, we know it's the middle of October. That's, that's the way it is. So until you're happy, and when we say go, we will, we will...
Um, I have a question on a concession stand. First of all, I've gotten four texts from parents wanting a new concession stand, to some of the athlete, athletes out there. Does it make money?
The booster clubs, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's, yes, it, that's not revenue coming back.
Right, but it makes money for the sports.
Signage, that kind of stuff comes back to the district.
Yeah, but I think it's, I mean, the booster clubs do a ton of work, and, you know, my kids are, you know, part of sports, too, so I, you know, I think...
And it offsets your, your costs of supplying them of the uniforms and equipment.
All right, moving on. Uh, nothing on the communication items. New business, board comment section. Anybody have any new business?
I had a comment.
Of course, sir.
Yep. Um, so, um, Mr. Garten, with the, the volunteer policy that we're talking about, were you involved in helping draft that?
Not the original one, I was not.
The one that we have in front of us right now?
Not the one that's in the current policy book, I didn't see it until the issue arose.
Okay. And, so will you be involved in helping out with this one?
I'm sure between Attorney Weed and I will come to the appropriate drafting solution.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Jeff.
But I think to, to be clear, when it comes to the, to the policy, the policy committee, the board policy, uh, that policy that's there was designed, Ms. Edwards, right after, shortly after I arrived, because of all the post-Sandusky legislation that came out and all that.
It came out, exactly.
When we were, the, the administration was challenged by the policy committee, I believe Mr. Klein was the chair at the time, and Mr. Kern, you might have been on it, is just, is, is, at the time, coming up with our, the AR that supported that, and the policy, um, at, in their interpretation, at the, the different people, cause there's only one person really who's been around here since the beginning of my time, and that's Mitch, is that the board at the time felt that the administration and AR was in concert with them. Depending upon who you are, you can argue that, not trying to re-argue that.
We don't have to, cause Jeff already told us it's contradictory.
And...
Not his exact words, gotcha.
That's not his exact words, and that's not what he says to his, your superintendent. Anyway, the, um, Mr. Garten has been in when, at every time that other people have challenged that, to include Mrs. Moyes, and I think it's been at least twice, if not three times, Mr. Garten was part of the response.
He never, he never rendered a legal opinion, though.
I think we've been down this road long enough myself, but...
Yeah, we have.
We'll fix it, right? We'll fix it.
Deal with it.
One, one item of new...
Hold on, did you get your answer?
Yeah, as long as he's involved, and he's, he's the one defending us. I mean, that's all I care about, really.
That's pretty stressful.
I mean, that's pretty simple.
I'm... Jeff, Jeff can weigh in on this, but I'm, I'm really confident that what we intend, just when we match these, it's, we're, we're definitely in compliance with the law. The, you know, the ACLU is not gonna sue us and take a lawsuit, if they, they're not gonna do it, cause they're not gonna win.
The one, uh, item I want to bring up is, uh, for those board members who are so inclined, uh, April twenty-ninth is, uh, PSBA advocacy, advocacy day on the Hill, is what they're calling it, and it's the opportunity for board members to go out to Harrisburg and meet with their representatives and speak directly with them on whatever topics, education-wise, we see fit. PSBA has their, you know, bullet points they want us to harp on, but at the same time, we should all feel free to speak up about anything we have a desire to be legislatively addressed in Harrisburg. I know I'm going, I believe Ms. Mitchell has expressed an interest in attending.
I'll be there.
So, just, I mean, it's, it's, it's for all of us, uh, it's, it's an entire Monday morning, uh, towards the afternoon as well, but mostly in the morning.
It's a, it's over by one thirty-two.
There you go. So, if anybody else has a desire to hobnob with the legislatures...
It's in Harrisburg.
Twenty-ninth, April twenty-ninth. I didn't want to wait until the next board meeting, cause that's kind of tight.
As we, as we've done every year, um, Mr. Anderson's also been a board member going down for this. Yeah, we'll have appointments with our state reps, Senator Mensch, um, and others, they'll assign us to different other senators, to make sure that, that everyone's covered, all the legislators are covered down there. It's a very exciting time. I'll be bringing students and a camera crew, student, uh, camera crew, cause the students really benefit from that. It's a really a, a good experience.
And if you follow Dr. Harner, odds are you will get an audience with the governor, just saying.
And a picture.
I do want to take a moment, and once again, as I have in previous meetings, voice my concern about the compressor station one mile away from Trumbiresville Elementary. Um, I was hoping that at some point, teachers or leadership from Trumbiresville Elementary would approach me to have a discussion, if they have any concerns. Uh, I'm gonna throw this out again, out there. Um, I also owe some of my fellow board members some data that I promised, and I have accumulated some of that data, and I have not forgot about you. I have a very nice, awesome, dry, one and a half hour YouTube presentation, that has lots of great info, but, that's right. But what I did was, I, I summarized some really good pieces, like into about eight or nine minutes of what you need to see, and gave you the times, and, and that's what I had been doing, so that you guys can watch just the meat and potatoes of the stuff that I feel is very important, in regards to the chemicals that would be pushed out into the air, the consequences, uh, based on the distance, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Yep, yep, and more to come. Uh, anybody else have any new business? Dates for board members, April twenty-fifth. Whoa, oh. We have one final public comment option, if there's anybody out there who would like to address the board. You may go first. Mr. Spear, if you don't mind?
I just want to reiterate that the volunteers were spoken to. You need to bring the policy in line with the AR, which sounds like you're going to. You need to make it as strict as possible. Volunteers are involved with kids on a daily basis. It does not matter the crime. If you are a convicted felon, it does not matter. Don't lessen the standards. Set the example, set, be a leader for the other school districts. You don't need to time me. I don't appreciate the dialogue that you...
Please.
Please be open-minded, advocate for all students, and not just for select parents.
Mr. Spear?
Definitely time him, seriously.
Chris, no clock, but five minutes.
Oh, yeah, oh, we do.
This is a short one. I think this is a three-minute one.
No, Chris Spear, Milford Township, I'm gonna deliver your legislative report, since you didn't.
It's not on the agenda.
So, um, I, I listened to, uh, Representative Fitzpatrick's, uh, town hall, this, I never do this either, but in that, um, he had brought up one, one thing that I, it caught my attention. It's a, he's a cosponsor of HR eighteen seventy-eight, which would, um, basically have the federal government fund forty percent of the associated price tag for special needs students. Um, and there's an accompanying Senate bill, too, and they're both bipartisan bills. Um, so the House bill is HR eighteen seventy-eight, the Senate bill is eight sixty-six. You could look into them, I mean, if that would mean the federal government kicks in a whole lot more money to fund for special education, that would probably only help us out.
It's, 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 it's a good thing to know, unfortunately, you're talking about a federal program, and we're going to Harrisburg.
I know, I know.
Well, just point of order for that, for, for the board, back when, uh, the legislation was passed in nineteen seventy-four, went into effect in nineteen seventy-five, um, the federal government said it, we'll, we'll fund it at forty percent, but they started at twelve, and it went to twelve, and then it went to twelve, or maybe down to ten, so it's never jumped over the low teens.
Yeah, they're saying now that it's fourteen point three percent, but, yeah. And, uh, I did have one other idea, too. So, since there was some people complaining or, or mentioning things about the details in, you know, these agendas, or on board docs, or the minutes for former meetings, maybe since you're looking to expand the pay for the, uh, the, um, PR person, you could also expand the role, too. I mean, the, these agendas and the minutes on the things are handled by the secretary, but that is a public outreach, too. That could be something that could be shared, or even performed by probably the, uh, public relations person. So, maybe if you gave them some more work, you can justify paying them more. And that's all.
Thank you, Chris. Or Mr. Spear.
Spears, Mr. Spears.
Spears.
Finally got it.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Board dates for, oh, Scott.
Almost got it, gotta be...
I didn't see you raise your hand.
Scott Hendricks, Milford Township.
Give me.
Um, I want to go with Mr. Kern's thing here about the, uh, not necessarily the drones, but, um, and, and Dr. Harner would know this, um, they do actually make a very nice portable bathroom that has running water and everything else, that comes on a tractor trailer and a flatbed. You could pull it in there during the season and put it away during the winter, and rent it, rather than maybe spending five hundred thousand dollars on a building. Just a thought.
Right?